All right, let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, July 28th, 2020. I'm going to ask if you would to stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. That will be followed by an invocation for council offered by council member Mark Hopper.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to be here tonight to do your work and the work of our community. We thank you for the way you blessed our community. And even in these days where there's much going on for us to make decisions about and be concerned with, I just pray that you would give us tonight humility and wisdom as we do your work and our constituents' work, Father. And I just pray that you would continue to bless us and help us as we walk through these days. And we will thank you for all you do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We welcome you this evening, and thank you for joining us. As you can tell, we are still appropriately spacing and have urged you to do the same by the placement of chairs. We appreciate your cooperation in that regard. I was telling somebody we even had to upgrade our speaker system just to make sure everybody there in the back could hear us. So we thank you for being with us this evening. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then, council will move to the minutes of the council meeting. You have the minutes from the July 14th meeting. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council departmental reports are contained in your packet. Anytime that you need information about that, Mr. Sell, we'll be glad to assist you with that. And we have Ms. Howell to join us this evening to give us a financial update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present the financials as of June 30th, 2020. Just to let you know, these are not final, they're the operational results. We'll still have some additional revenue and expenditures that we'll be posting as well as audit and year entries. The final results will be for fiscal year 20 will be presented to you with the audit. So starting out, we'll start with the general fund. The year-to-date revenue is $29,904,000. The year-to-date operational expenditures are $26,580,000. If you look at the dashboards where we compare actuals to benchmarks, you'll see that we do have a positive overall variance of $3,325,000 and a cash balance in the account of $14,453,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $2,472,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $2,480,000 with a cash balance in the hospitality fund of $245,000. In the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,070,000. The expenditures are $1,337,000 with $898,000 in the cash account. So that's all I have, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions?
How about the hospitality since March? How do we compare actual versus budgeted revenue?
Actually, when you look at just the hospitality tax line, we are actually 1% over budget, even with the decrease that we've had for a couple of months. And so we're still looking really good in that fund.
Now, that's from March? Because I know we were about 4%, 5% ahead.
Well, not from March. I guess I don't have that number, but for the entire year, we are still 1% over budget.
We thank you, ma'am. Appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Before we move on, it is both appropriate and noteworthy that Mr. Sell joins us this evening. We appreciate him as deputy city administrator stepping in to a role that he is obviously familiar with, but a seat that's a little bit different. But we appreciate his help as he has stepped in from time to time in the absence of Mr. Driggers. And we appreciate his help this week. Next time we gather, Mr. Mayorman will be joining us for his first meeting. And so just a quick reminder in that regard also, I think you got a note from Ms. Duncan about an opportunity for us to gather with the leadership team and Mr. Mayorman coming up soon. And I would urge you to try and make plans to join us if you can for that occasion. Will be a good opportunity to speak with him in a little less formal situation than the last time you were with him for any extended period of time. And will be a good chance for you to meet him in a more casual environment and possibly share some information about yourself and the city along with our leadership team. So would urge you to make plans to be a part of that. Council, from time to time, we have a petitioner to join us. I believe this may be one of the first times that I can remember we've had that request made two weeks in a row, but this week we have Justin Hughes that would like to address council. Mr. Hughes would like to speak to the council regarding the zoning code as it relates to tattoo parlors. Mr. Hughes, the podium is yours, sir, if you would like to join us. All right, well, maybe he is not with us. We'll check in in just a minute if we see any late arrivals. We will give him time since he initially made an effort to be with us this evening. So we will move on, then. We have a very special presentation this evening. As most of you know, the Municipal Association of South Carolina each year offers a number of achievement awards. And we have been the recipient of a number of those awards in the past, but it is with great pleasure that Steve Owens joins us tonight to announce that the 2020 Municipal Association of South Carolina Achievement Award in Communications goes to the city of Greer. And with that, the floor is yours, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. As you know, the Municipal Association of South Carolina Achievement Award program is highly competitive with member South Carolina cities allowed to annually submit one project in one category. For us, the categories are communications, public safety, public service, economic development, and public works. There also are four categories that are population-based, those being under 20,000 in population. We obviously do not qualify for those. So we're in with the big boys, and we like our chances. We chose to enter the communications category. That was based on our Synergy Communications Plan. Obviously, Synergy playing off the word synergy. It worked very well in this case. We had multiple entities coming together to form the communications team. The city of Greer, composed of myself and Taylor Crouch, Greer CPW, Allison Rauch, PIO there participated, Chamber of Commerce, Nikki Huber helped us out largely, the Greer Development Corporation and Greer Station Association, First Katie Harris and later Sharon Self participated with us, and Roslyn Weston from RA Weston Communications was a contract worker with us, came up with some great ideas and helped implement those. Our committee was tasked with really two major tasks. One was to inform citizens and keep traffic coming downtown during the construction. Too simple task, but not too easy task. We developed a communications plan that involved everything from a keepsake magazine to giving away Synergy helmet bowls on National Ice Cream Day, which was just a couple of weeks ago. This partnership was not limited to our committee. I'm blessed to say we had such partners as the Greer Citizen, which played a key role in production of our magazine, Sossaman Construction, our general contractor, Co-Transco, which they both participated in a number of events with us, both financially and in person, and a multitude of downtown merchants who were asked almost on the spur of the moment to go in front of a microphone or to speak with a news reporter. And we appreciate their patience with this project and their participation to help everyone know what it was about. We presented our entry in person at the MAS C office in Columbia in early March to a jury that included officials from city and county organizations from across the southeast. I'm pleased to announce this evening that we did win, and we were the only upstate city this year to have won an achievement award. That includes the population category. This was a difficult secret to keep since early March, but MAS C asked that they be allowed to unveil winners at a special luncheon held as part of their annual summer meeting. That's held this month and was just held a couple of weeks ago, but many of you annually attend that meeting and luncheon, and you know what a great event it is. Unfortunately, COVID-19 has changed the way we do business in 2020. The annual meeting was moved to a virtual meeting, and the awards recognition was downsized. I'm very happy to report that MAS C did produce and sent us a short video, it's a little less than two minutes, that recognizes the honor. Play that for you now.
The Municipal Association of South Carolina Achievement Awards honor innovation and excellence in local government projects and services. The city of Greer has won the 2020 award in the communications category for the communication plan for the Center G Downtown Streetscape Project. Construction can create the impression that roads are impassable, which can hurt or even destroy businesses along those roads. This created concerns for a massive 18-month project to improve streetscaping, sidewalks, and underground utilities in the Greer Station downtown district. To ensure the public knew businesses were still open during the project, the city of Greer, along with the Greer Commission of Public Works, Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce, and Greer Development Corporation, created an ambitious communications plan. The plan featured the Center G website as well as a broadcast, print, social media, and billboard campaign. It included special events, giveaways, merchant relations efforts, and media outreach. The city also used virtual reality goggles to demonstrate what the finished streets would look like. Synergy also focused on marketing affected businesses, a shuttle service connected parking areas to businesses. Downtown commercial occupancy rose from 30% in 2016 to 97% in 2019, with five restaurants opening during construction. Congratulations to the city of Greer.
I do have the plaque with me. It's not been sanitized, so I won't present it, but it reads "2020 Municipal Achievement Award Presented to the City of Greer for the Communications Category in recognition of its superior performance and innovative program leading to improved quality of life for its residents." Just want to say congratulations to council for making all this possible.
Steve, thank you to you and your team. These things we know don't happen overnight or done easily. And I know that you and your team helped and worked on this even in the midst of all the other things that were going on during construction. And so a tip of our hat and a very special thanks to you and every member of the team for all the work that they did on this, and we appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we find ourselves at the administrators' report or the deputy administrators' report. Mr. Sell, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I only have a few quick items to bring to your attention. I'm going to echo the comments you just made on the efforts of the communications team and our partners that contributed to that project and to the effort of getting materials put together and presented for the presentation to the Municipal Association's committee to review. They did a great job, a good project, well-deserved. One of the things that Municipal Association takes a look at in evaluating these are projects that are new or unique and that can also be duplicated. We believe that that project meets both of those, and I think it's something a lot of municipalities. In fact, we've gotten calls already about what those efforts were and how they looked and what they can do to do the same thing. So great attention for us, great attention for our team, a great recognition for the city. A couple, a few other things I'd like to mention. One is, as council is likely aware, through the CARES Act, Greenville County was one of the, was the only county in South Carolina that received direct funding through the CARES Act by meeting a population standard. I believe it was in the ballpark of about $91 million. Part of that funding was distributed to the cities at $1 million for the municipalities within the county to be able to submit for reimbursement of certain qualifying expenses. I did want to let council know that we were able to get a submission to the county to address expenses related to the COVID response for materials, personal protective equipment, supplies, refunds that were related to cancellation of sports and programming activities that the city experienced because of the cancellation of those events and that programming. We submitted for reimbursement of $161,800, and we received that check from the county last week. So a bit of good news for us to be able to get that reimbursement. Our finance team worked diligently to put together the information. We've been tracking that information in anticipation of the likelihood that we would have an opportunity to seek reimbursement for those expenses, and we got ours in right away. I believe it's a first-come, first-served million dollars, so we want to make sure we got in line immediately. And we will continue to track those expenses as we move along. We continue to incur expenses related to the COVID response, and we will submit those until they tell us there's no more money available to be reimbursed. The good news is, is that there is also additional opportunities through the state, through the CARES Act, through state funds, that will address payroll-related expenses for the COVID response that we have yet to submit, but we are in the process of gathering that information and anticipation of getting that to them as soon as that becomes available to us. Again, our finance staff has been working to get those figures put together for overtime response or leave that we've provided in order to address the expenses that may not have already been compensated for through some of the other programs that the federal government implemented in response to COVID. But we do continue to monitor that, but I did want to share with you that we have already started to receive some reimbursements. Also, as the mayor mentioned, staff has been working this week, in fact, over the past few weeks, to prepare for Mr. Mayorman to join us, starting this coming Monday. Staff will have an opportunity, as the mayor mentioned, we do have an opportunity for a drop-in with Mr. Mayorman on Thursday evening. We, staff, some staff will be meeting with him prior to that. Our personnel department, HR department, our IT folks have already reached out to him to kind of take care of some of the new employee logistics ahead of time so that on his first day, he doesn't have to spend a lot of time going through the new employee thing, getting his badge, getting, in his case, keys, getting into the payroll system, passwords, things like that. We want to make sure that he has that information so that when he arrives Monday, he can get the ground running. We will spend some time with him also following his work with the personnel folks on Wednesday. Some of the administrative staff will have some time with him to get an idea from him about what he sees his first week looking like, sharing some ideas about how we can approach that and what we can do to help that along, but we're trying to leave it as flexible and that we can make adjustments based on what his expectations are and what his needs are. And we'll try to get that information on Thursday as well, again, so that we can start Monday off and get things rolling and move forward with that. Couple other things real quickly. One is that, Ms. Duncan, if you have not already found it, has placed your budget books for the FY 2021 budget in your boxes, so that is available to you. You can pick that up before you leave or at any time. It'll be in your box whenever you're ready to get that. Finally, to just make you aware, you're probably the Center for the Arts has started their project through the funding that was provided through the Make Greer Great Partnership for Tomorrow to do a sculpture of a tree that had, as time had come, and instead of just cutting it down completely, they have moved forward with creating a sculpture out of it. That work began on the 23rd. It's going to take about two to three weeks for the folks to carve that piece of artwork out of that tree. It is underway, so if you want to stop by and take a look, and I believe someone's being tracked on social media, through our website, through our Facebook page as well. But it's kind of interesting to see the progress that they're making on doing that work. But that is underway, and if you get an opportunity, I suggest you go by and check it out. It seems to be drawing, seems like a lot of folks are stopping by to see how that's turning out. That's all I have. I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Greenville County got $91 million?
That is correct. One of the programs, I think the majority of that money in the ballpark of around about $70 million, went to the small business loan program that they were implementing to provide grant funding through a grant application process, and the rest of the money was divided up over a variety of different programs and opportunities.
I wondered what they were going to do with the bulk of it.
Yeah, the majority of it went to that. I think a million dollars went to Greenville County, a million to the municipalities, and then SPD's got a certain amount, I think about $500,000. There were some other allocations, some other agencies throughout the county, non-county related agencies that provide support for county residents. They basically allocated all $91 million to some means.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the update and you filling in tonight. Council, let's move to items of old business, and as we get to this point in the agenda, I want to offer an explanation in regards to some of our old business. At our last, at our last meeting, we had a number of ordinances in regards to annexations and into zoning issues. It is typical that I would ask at some point during that conversation if the owner or representative of the owner of the property was with us. I neglected to do that for the first couple of ones, and so I may have overlooked you in that process. It had been a bit of a long evening, and so no ill will on my part, but as we go through the agenda this evening on items of old business, I will ask if you are here in regards to that item tonight, and if there is anything that you want to add to our meeting in regard to the item before us. I will afford you that opportunity since I may not have appropriately done that at our last meeting. And so we will start with the first item, which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 29-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Mark III Properties located on North Howell Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of DRD for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 29-2020?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one update. The ordinance has been amended to reflect accurate ownership. The owner is Michael Bruce and not Mark III Properties. That was a clerical error on the part of staff, and the ordinance has been amended, I believe, by Ms. Duncan.
Okay. A show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? All righty. If you'll be available, we'll see if something comes up in that regard, or I'll recognize you either one. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to receive second and final reading of ordinance number 29-2020.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Any new or additional information you'd like to add to the discussion? Thank you, sir. Final call? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, we'll move to the second and final reading of ordinance number 30-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of property owned by Michael Bruce and a portion of property owned by Gap Creek LLC located on North Howell Road and Gap Creek Road from R12 and C2 Commercial to DRD. This comes as a second reading. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any new or additional information, Ms. Cotty, in regards to ordinance number 30-2020?
No, sir.
A show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Anything new or additional you'd like to add? Thank you, sir. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
We have the second and final reading of ordinance number 33-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Deanna Rogers located at 2924 Brushy Creek Road from DRD to R12, which is a single-family resident. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 33-2020?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. A show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Floor is open for discussion.
Do you have any homes? I know when reading it, it said a single family. Is it just going to be one home on that two acres?
It is one home. Mm-hmm.
It seems like such a busy street to be building, you know.
Yeah. It does have a pretty, we have seen the plans for that one. They've submitted for a building permit, and it is set back quite far from the road.
That's why I was wondering, because I profiled and saw that it's, you know, pretty long.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the second and final reading of ordinance number 35-2020. This is authorizing a lease purchase agreement, Series 2020, in the principal amount of not exceeding $2,57,103 relating to the financing of equipment for municipal purposes authorizing the execution and delivery of documents, including the lease agreement and other matters related thereto. Ms. Howell? This comes as a second reading. Anything new that we need to understand about the lease purchase agreement?
I just wanted to give you an update that the RFP closed last week. We did receive two proposals, and the winning proposal was Truist Bank with an interest rate of 1.29%.
Upon the advice of staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. And a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Floor is open for discussion. I'll offer one comment. We hadn't seen interest rates like that in a long time. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Albert. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, then. We have the first reading of ordinance number 37-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Margarita Hewitt located at 2920 Brushy Creek Road from DRD to R12, single-family. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please.
And this request is related to the second reading. You, counsel, heard a similar request at your last meeting, but this is docket number RZ 20-41. It is 2920 Brushy Creek Road. They were previously a design review district, and they're requesting to rezone to R12. This is an area of the property. Again, it's located along Brushy Creek Road. This is the current zoning. Again, it is a DRD. It was previously approved for a town home community that did not follow through with an FDP, and the property to the north of it requested the rezoning that you just approved during second reading tonight. The property to the south has an existing single-family home on it, and they were not interested in rezoning at this time. Across the street is R12. And then this is the future land use map. It is a residential land use two community or kind of the medium in terms of density of our residential land uses. This is a current street view of the site. It is undeveloped, as I mentioned. They have submitted for a building permit. Actually, this property has not submitted for a building permit, but we have talked to the owner, and they're interested in submitting once this rezoning goes through, if successful. I am happy to answer any questions.
This is a single, one single family home?
Yes, ma'am.
For the purpose of discussion, I will entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we have the first reading of ordinance number 38-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of property owned by Bonita Taylor McCall located at 1040 Poplar Drive from C2 Commercial to C3 Highway Commercial.
Mr. Arrow, I'd like to move that we table this ordinance due to some, I'll call it antiquated ordinances. The intended use of this property is only allowed in C3 Highway Commercial, and I think we need to discuss with staff if there's any way to make this possible for the intended use to happen. The intended use, I guess the reported intended use was or is HVAC contractor. Is that correct?
Air conditioning, repair, and equipment.
Okay. HVAC contractor or?
HVAC contractor.
Okay.
Basically glorified parking lot with warehouse.
Because of some antiquated ordinances, it kicks this HVAC contracting business into a group that was considered appliance repair, you know, the TV repair people, that kind of thing. I believe that's why it is done this way. No other, per staff, there's not any other construction-related businesses that have to be in C3. And so I think we need to, I think we need to have some more discussion about it on staff level to see if there's any way this can happen.
Counsel, that comes as a motion. It'll need a second to move forward.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, I didn't quite, I don't know the cost of your system, RLA or what, but I didn't quite understand your reasoning on that yet.
Well, when you read, they're asking for C3, which is Highway Commercial.
Right.
And of course, I think the planning commission here made the correct decision. This is C3, you would be approving C3 in an area that you shouldn't have C3. Then the reason that the only available zoning for this business is C3, but I believe it's, the reason it's that way is that whenever this ordinance was written, my opinion is they were classifying it as a repair shop, like appliances, televisions, things like that, not a HVAC contractor. And like I said, the HVAC, the only construction contractor that is required to be in C3, and correct me if I'm wrong, is HVAC.
So uses that are allowed in C3 that are not allowed in C2, the first one is air conditioner, equipment, sales, and repair, which is what staff felt that this request fell under. Other examples include appliance repair, auto garage, auto repair, auto storage, auto service station, building material sales, cabinet shop, electric motor repair, farm machinery sales, household appliance repair, mini warehouses, among others. So staff did feel like this was a more high-intensity use, similar to some of the other uses in C3, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay. If you will stand by just one minute, then. Sir, you seem to have some insight into this business. Would you come to the podium, please? If you'll identify yourself.
I'm John Chisholm. Sorry, I'm just coming from work. I didn't get a chance to change. But yeah, basically, what he's saying is we would really be, you know, pretty much a glorified parking lot with a warehouse. You know, we wouldn't be doing any work, actual work there, really not even have, you know, any customers showing up. We've been in business for three years, and actually, we're currently running out of my house at 202 Hill Street. And, you know, we don't bother our neighbors. We haven't had any complaints over there. We've got dumpsters over there, you know, and this is on an acre lot and, you know, right in the middle of a neighborhood. You know, even with the whole COVID thing, we've got 12 employees, you know, growing rapidly. We want to stay in Greer. You know, I own two homes in Greer, you know, and this would just be a good situation for us to maintain low overhead. But yeah, I mean, basically, like what he was saying, realistically, what we would do is park our trucks there overnight. Guys show up in the morning, load up, get in their trucks, and then they're gone all day. So, you know, if anything, we'd be the quietest business, you know. Two tenths of a mile, you've got Kirby's Transfer Station right up the road. You can literally see it from this property. You know, I'm happy to do, it doesn't have to be C3. I would do a special exception or whatever you, you know, whatever y'all saw fit for. I don't know if there's anything else that we can do that, you know, it's C2, but we're allowed to do that, and then if we move, it goes back to, you know, whatever y'all prefer. You know, I don't know if you have any other questions or?
How many trucks do you currently, or servicemen, service people do you have at this point in time?
We have 12 employees.
12, okay. Is that basically 12 trucks going in and out every day?
Four trucks.
Four trucks.
And what we do is most of our service guys end up taking their trucks home. So really, the only trucks that we would have there would be, you know, install trucks. You know, as I said, I mean, we're here by whatever, you know, you guys want us to do. I mean, you know, we keep a clean, neat place. We're not looking to have a junkyard out there. As I said, with the dumpsters, we actually have a dumpster for all of our scrap metal, so we're not one of those businesses that tear down units and leave them laying out in the yard and all that stuff. We're very organized. We put them in a dumpster. They come pick up the dumpster, you know, so we stay clean and well-maintained. You know, if you look at this property now, you go by there now, it's like a hangout. There's beer bottles, there's, you know, cigar wrappers that, you know, people smoking weed or drinking or whatever they're doing over there. This building's been, has been, you know, vacant for many, many years. At the previous meeting, we actually had a lady in that neighborhood came and said she didn't have a problem with it. You know, she thought it would be a good thing. So, you know, it's either that. I mean, I don't know what zone, what you'd put in C2, but I don't think we're going to get anything else in that area. It was actually a parcel of three acres, and the two acres on the back, they didn't want that third acre. So they broke it off and bought the two acres and made it residential. You'll never put a home in there. I'm also in real estate, and you'll never put a home in there. I do investment as well. You've got power lines going across the bottom, and that's where we would plan on parking our trucks, but you can't build a house there. And, you know, I don't know what kind of, any other kind of business that you would put there.
Do you know what kind of change needs to be made in your question?
Well, see, that's the issue. And that's why I'm asking you to be tabled, so we can figure out how to do it, because right now, like I said, it's only allowed in C3. So do we put it C2? Do we add verbiage in C2 that, you know, we'd have to have staff edit C2 and bring it back for us for approval or, you know, whatever the case may be. I don't know the proper way to do it. That's why I think we need a little time to, I think we need to try to make it happen. But I don't like the fact that because we're using, we know that this year they're going to begin redoing ordinances and bringing things up to date. And so that's, I think this is just what, this is a business that's kind of caught between the old and the new.
Well, I see what you're saying. I hate to delay this gentleman, just because we need to make some, some kind of adjustment to our ordinance. I think that's not his fault. If we intend to straighten this out in the long run, is there any way we can go ahead and have first reading, get it adjusted in the meantime, or even go ahead and do him, and then future ones would be adjusted?
Well, if you zone it C3, or no, I don't even know how you would do it.
Chisholm, we appreciate your information. If you want to have a seat.
Well, we also do plumbing, so if you want to put it down as a plumbing company, we can.
Too late now, sir.
You sound like a politician. Well, since it's disallowed in other zonings, I don't know the technical way to do it correctly. If we went back, I'm not saying we need to approve it in C3, because if we approve it in C3 and then a week after we have final reading, you know, he blows off the face of the earth and you've got a parcel of property there that really doesn't fit. But I think it fits well with that community, because like he was saying, as you start, I guess that would be south, you get into commercial, and then you wind up into S1 and I1.
That would have been where I would have thought something like this would have been located.
If I can add a little bit to that, and a question from Ms. Cotty, based on the description that was given by the applicant about what the business would entail, would this not be a use that could be permitted under S1 as air conditioning equipment, sales, and service?
Yes, sir. It's allowed in C3 and S1 under that same use in each.
Another zoning is other than C3. So if a desire to approach it from asking for an S1, would that need to go back to the planning commission, or could that be done without going back to the planning commission?
I believe it would need to go back for a public hearing for a different zoning request. I would note that staff wouldn't support that either.
Yeah, my question would be, would we be jumping out of the frying pan into the fire to go from C2 to S1?
S1, because?
We may be opening a can of worms there. I agree with Mr. Arrowood that there's a substantive change that may need to be made here, at least examined in some regard. I also understand your point that at this point, the action that we are taking does delay him. I think for the sake and purpose of discussion without running into, running into an issue here, since we've got an actual denial from the planning commission, is that we probably need to spend a little time thinking through this one. And while it may delay Mr. Chisholm in some regards, if his endgame is to acquire this piece of property, he may be better off delaying it a bit while we try and figure out an appropriate solution about moving forward.
It couldn't fit into a special exemption procedure? I mean, did that criteria, with the type of business they have?
No, ma'am. It's specifically listed under C3 and S1, and so since it's specifically listed by that air conditioning.
I've gone by there a couple of times and trying to figure out that street address of 1040 Poplar Drive. I don't see how they ever came up with that.
I'm not sure.
Because it's nine, I get seven, and then the popular place apartments is 770 or something like that. And then you go on up, you're in the 800 block, and you go on up and cross the bridge and everything. And then, so, you know, as I look at it and I'm trying to pull it up and trying to figure out, okay, how do they get 1040 out of this thing?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. So because it's listed specifically in those two other places, and it's not listed under the uses that are allowed for special exception for C2, staff didn't feel that was an option. However, if it's something you would like to explore for a potential text amendment to add it as an allowable use, if that's the consensus of council, staff can certainly prepare the amendment.
Where are other construction companies? What zoning do they have to?
Well, I mean, the ones that I just ran through that were under C3 would be in C3 or I1 or S1.
But it sounds like most of those are ones that actually do repair work on site.
Potentially.
Which is the difference. Where would they be? What kind of zoning would they have to be?
I mean, if it's just an office potentially, but if they're...
Same, see, it's going to be, it's going to be office employees coming, their trucks coming, they're going to receive deliveries, they're going to work out of it. What kind of zoning do they require?
I mean, I'm not certain. We would have to, we look for each use. I mean, I'd have to look at each of the different zoning districts and look.
One of my, if you brought that up, that Wilman's Electric is actually right beside Willie's, right there, it's my town, the neighborhood. And then you've got AC Bennett right here on, on the highway of, like, drop it from the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm aware of all that. I'm just. See, and that's why it needs to be looked at. Yeah, it's, I think.
I mean, as I mentioned, all of these, you know, many of the building material sales, mini warehouses.
Yeah, but C3 is not proper for that area. I mean, that's why we don't, we really need to.
Yeah.
You're saying your goal is to try to get this under the umbrella of C2 along with electrical contractors, plumbers?
Right. In general, yes, because the list that was just spelled out for us, you didn't hear building. building contractor, you didn't hear concrete finisher, you didn't hear so on and so forth. And when you look at the C3, it's really addressing sales and repairs. And that's why I think it kind of goes back to the time when there were a lot of different kinds of repair shops where you had... Take, for instance, there's a business in Greer that sells used appliances. And they have a lot of their inventory outside. And I think that's probably what the reason was. I don't know. I'm just making some assumptions, but... I just don't think that, I don't think there was a choice there. I mean, that was kind of a choice that was set up to fail.
Counsel, we have a motion and a second in regards to tabling this action. Any other discussion relative to that?
When you table it, how long will it be before it comes back, Jay?
Well, when you table something, a member of the council has to request it come back. So I would say, is that correct? So when we have some more information from staff, it's their recommendation, then I think that's when we should try to... I mean, I would think that we can do it by the next meeting.
Would that require an ordinance to change C2 before we voted on this?
Yes.
Right. So we would have to do that before we voted on this again?
That's right. But since we're tabling the first reading, you just put that before...
The ordinance before the first reading.
The same meeting.
Right.
Yes, sir. That would require a public hearing with the planning commission. I mean, we could certainly bring it during discussion for council to provide input, but we would have to take a text amendment through the full process with a public hearing with planning commission. So that would go to their September meeting. And then the last, I believe your meeting is September 25th? Am I wrong? 28th? So the last meeting in September, we could potentially bring it back for first reading.
Well, Mr. Bettis' point, we can do first reading and title on it.
We could keep the process moving in some regard. I mean, it would take a while for us to do, but again, the end game is to verify that this business is more appropriate in a different zoning. I think it's action that we need to take on the front end to go ahead and address this. Any further comments or debate in this regard?
Is it classified as a warehouse to begin with? I know I saw that on tax records. So I'm just wondering.
Oh, the existing structure? I'm not certain.
I saw that, well, one piece of it said vacant, but it's not vacant.
Sure.
There is a building sitting there. And the building has been there for quite some time.
Yeah. So mini warehousing is, again, not allowed in C2. And so if it's been vacant for more than 90 days, they wouldn't be able to be considered grandfathered as a legal nonconforming use anymore, so.
Yeah. Because it was on the Greer County tax records, it did show warehouse.
Well, it was a upholstery shop, the last use for it, but that's been out of business since 1980, early 80s.
Mr. Garza. Because Popper Drive extension was the main road from the Pelham Hill to Greer area, where they would, I guess they took the cotton. I don't know what they did with the Pelham, then they brought it to Greer, and that was the road that it came up. So I would imagine it was a store.
It was a store. At one point in time, Mr. Taylor leased that store. There was gas pumps out there. I remember that.
If we make those changes that we've talked about, C2, to include this type of business, we don't necessarily have to change the zoning for this property at that point, do we? Since it's already C2?
Correct.
Right.
Unless you decide, and again, you wouldn't have to change the zoning, but if you decided to place it under special exception, it would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So it depends on where you want to put it. I mean, I will note that, you know, when applicants come forward with certain uses, if staff feels that the use is appropriate in certain zoning, we would have suggested a text amendment. In this case, we felt like the potential for deliveries and the truck usage and these types of things is more appropriate for the C3 and S1 zoning. However, we're happy to prepare an amendment if that's the will of council.
And I want to make sure that point was clear, that if we take the approach of amending the zoning ordinance to allow it by special exception, this ordinance for this request would not come back to council. It would go to the BZA to be heard by them as a special exception to be allowed in the zoning ordinance. Correct?
Yes, sir. Depending on where you put it, you could put it under uses by right or by special exception.
Right. If it goes under C2 uses by right, then this...
Then it would not come back at all. It would be allowed.
Yeah, and I think that's why there needs to be some substantial discussion about this, because to Jay's point earlier, I don't see the difference between the local plumber that's right down the street from here as opposed to what has been proposed for that area right there. I just think we need to have some discussion in regards to that. I don't think it needs to be necessarily a special exception. I mean, this seems to me like something that we just need to clarify. Any further discussion or questions in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yeah, we are voting on this to table.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. All right, counsel, let's move on to the first reading of ordinance number 39-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of property owned by OZF LLC located on South Beverly Lane from R12 to RM2. Ms. Cotty, information in regards to ordinance number 39-2020, please, ma'am.
Yes, mayor. As you mentioned, it is a request to go from R12 to RM2. This is an aerial of the property. You'll see in the next slide that this property is in the process of subdividing. And I'll go ahead and just show you that piece to the north that fronts Beverly is the piece in question. They have submitted to the county and they have recorded that and requested the property transaction, but it has not updated on GIS yet. But that southern portion that fronts Clayton will remain R12. And so they are requesting the RM2 on the top for the use of a duplex. So again, back to the aerial to give you a better feel, that is West Point Set Street to the north, and then there along Howell. Again, this is the current zoning. The lighter pink is the R12. There is Office District OD to the north and directly across the street as well as C2 kind of catty corner to the north. And then there are some R2 pieces with duplexes across the street to the south. The future land use map does call for residential land use 2. Across the street, it's designated residential land use 3. And this is kind of an aerial, the property is the area to the right with the wooded lot. Just based on the existing land uses that are out there, the existing zoning districts in the immediate vicinity, and then the future land use as residential land use 2 and the use as a duplex. While that is a multi-family zoning, the lot is not large enough for more than a single family home or a duplex per our regulations. So staff did recommend approval. They had a public hearing with planning commission, apologies, last week, and planning commission did recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you go back to one slide for me?
Yes, sir.
Please, ma'am.
That's in that corner right there is Calvary Baptist Church.
Yeah, that's Calvary across the street right there, right? On the water.
This entire parcel right now is, is this, there's nothing on this? It looks like on the Google Earth, it looks completely wooded.
It is. I believe that they submitted for a building permit for a single family home on that other larger piece on the R12 that just recently got permitted for a single family home. Closer to the, pretty close to the roadway in that parcel to its north.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Still here a second? Floor is open for discussions. Questions? Before I forget again, by show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Anything you'd like to add to this discussion? Thank you, sir. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we're at the first reading of ordinance number 40-2020. This is an ordinance approving a major change in design review district, DRD, of certain real property in the city of Greer related to the South Main Towns development. You'll see an explanation below there. We will ask Ms. Cotty to give us information in that regard.
Sure. As I'm sure you all are well aware, since it's currently under construction, the South Main Towns is a DRD townhome community with up to 95 approved units located along South Highway 14. Again, it is currently under construction. It is a little over halfway built out at this point. This is a current zoning map. Again, that's, I believe, the Family Dollar and then Mutt's are the red C2 properties that you see. And then the yellow is the DRD. These are some aerial kind of overhead shots of what the development currently looks at like. Again, it's, a portion of it is built out. Again, this is kind of what that development looks like so far in that area that's undeveloped are where those approved lots will be taking place. And again, kind of another shot of the existing development. And then this is an example of the elevations that are currently out there. The statement of intent originally asked for 1,600 square feet, two to three bedroom townhomes with one car garage. The applicant is requesting a new building type without a garage. And this is the elevation, again, that they're proposing. This is included as an exhibit to the ordinance. This is the plat, just again, to kind of show you the layout, you can kind of see where they still have left to build out. And did want to point out the visitor parking areas along that spine road as well. And so staff, when the applicant made the request, we did take a look at the DRD ordinance. Again, we do have, staff has administrative authority for minor changes. We did feel like this could potentially be considered a major change based on number five, which is altering the basic concept or general characteristics of the DRD district. We thought the change in building type was enough that we wanted a public hearing and feedback from planning commission and council. We did work with the applicant to have a few conditions that they did incorporate into an updated statement of intent. The first was that that elevation that we just saw, whoops, sorry, guys, would be incorporated into the statement of intent. Oh, I went to the end, sorry. That it would be incorporated into the ordinance. So they would be required to keep the architectural features similar to what's out there now. And it would have to include that large bay window architectural feature. The second kind of condition was that no more than 50% of the remaining units to be built out could incorporate this new building type. And so that equated to a maximum of 30 units or six building sets. So each townhome is, sets are between four and six units, depending on which kind of area that they're in. And then the last condition was that we wanted to make sure there was dispersal of the new building type. And so for the rows of townhomes, if they were next to each other, they would not be allowed to have two sets of units without the garage next to each other. They would have to alternate with a garage set unit. So staff did recommend approval. This did go for a planning commission public hearing last week, and planning commission did recommend approval as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe a representative is here as well.
For the purpose of the discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And I'll need a second. Floor is open for discussion. By show of hand, is owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us? If you'll stand by, please, sir. I'm sure there may be some questions in regards to this. Floor is open for discussion.
What, with the proposed new design, what is the square footage of the unit?
The statement of intent was 1,600 square feet. Now the statement of intent has a range of 1,300 to 1,600 square feet. And so for the exact square footage, I'm sure the applicant could answer that question.
Okay, so the original statement of intent is 1,600?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And so... What was the purpose of asking for deletion of garage and going to a possible smaller size?
I believe that would maybe be best addressed by the applicant.
We can do that.
Okay.
Is this the updated proposal in terms of the drawing here?
The elevation?
No, not the elevation, the layout of where...
Oh, the layout is not changing at all. So this is the approved plat, and so it would just be the elevation, the building plans of the set.
Okay, so I guess my question is, and I can't do the math in my head fast enough here, but if we've got 50 plus or minus units either constructed or under construction and 94 total lots, and let's just for round numbers say there's another 50 plus or minus left. And a third of, I mean, 30 of those can be this new model, but no more than two sets can be together without garages. How's it going to be possible to get 30 more, 30 new? I mean, can that even be done?
I don't know if 30 can honestly be done, and that's why we included the hyphen for the six building sets. It may be that it would be 24 or 28. It would just be a maximum.
If you'll stand by then, because I think there's going to be more questions. Sir, could you come to the podium, please, and identify yourself? Sirs, then?
My name is Ron Johnson. I'm with the Builder TCC Venture. I have with me tonight Bill Kane, Senior VP with our builder, NVR Ryan, and he'd be happy to answer any specific questions relative to the design request.
Well, Mr. Kane, I believe there's one on the floor. Would you explain the change in the size or the footprint of the buildings, please?
So one of the things that we focus on is we serve the market. That's really what we do. We don't have a we-build-it-and-they-come kind of thing, and so we do a lot of market research. And as you're probably well aware, a lot of folks are really clamoring for affordable housing, affordable quality housing. So one of the ways that we can do that is by reducing the square footage and providing a beautiful home. And these are three-bedroom homes that are about 1,300 square feet and don't have a garage. So it's a little bit smaller in the spaces and provide good quality, affordable housing in keeping with the look of the neighborhood as well. The building envelope is the same. It's the same width as the existing product. It's just a little bit smaller and provides a more affordable home. I can be in the 1, I'm currently in the 180s, and this can put me in the 160s for new construction.
So it's driveway parking instead of garage parking?
If you've been out there, most folks don't use their garage for parking anyway. So we do have two pad, parking pad in front of each unit, and it would be the same with this.
So have you, have you had any discussions with the current owners who just purchased your product out there, who have moved in to say, we are proposing that we build something that is less in value? So is it a haul when you start doing an assessment of the value of property?
So I'll, I'll share with you. You say less in value, but it's actually more expensive per square foot. So the value really is on a size per square foot, so it won't negatively impact the existing.
You're telling me that, that the garage has no value? It does not have more value?
No, it absolutely does.
Okay.
So it doesn't negatively impact the, from an appraisal standpoint, an appraiser will actually deduct value because you don't have a garage, add value if you do. So it doesn't, it's not, it won't negatively impact the value of the existing homeowners out there.
Well, it will cause us less square footage, correct?
No. If your neighbor has a smaller house than you do on your street, that doesn't negatively impact your, if it were radically different, it would, but not if it were just a little bit smaller.
So what's the purpose in asking for the change? Do you say you just want to sell something cheaper?
No, no. I want to provide affordable housing to folks and have a broader reach.
Well, what is affordable housing, your definition?
It depends on how much you make. So more people can afford a less expensive home than a more expensive home.
So why didn't you start out with it to begin with?
The market research didn't show that at that time.
Okay, and you, so your market research now shows that?
Yes.
Well, somebody correct me, but I thought we were under record housing starts in our city. And when I talk to our realtors in the community and realtors that sit here, there's just no inventory on the market. So it doesn't sound like the demand has decreased at all. So if the demand hasn't decreased, how is your number of buyers decreased? And so the affordability, how does that come into play? I'm trying to understand this because I really do think that it, it seems as if you came into a DRD and now you said you're going to do this, we're going to do this because it's more simple to sell. And, and it is more simple to sell because the less that you charge is, you know, you can get more buyers. So you've had a chance.
Is that a bad thing to have more affordable housing in your, in your community?
It can be.
Okay.
Yeah, it can be. But I don't think that that is your true purpose, affordable housing, because if you were, you would have started off at that point.
I started off with saying that I served the market. So the market is, is asking for that, so.
We're not, I'm not going down that road. So you agree when I say there is not enough housing stock? Is that correct? Did, did you, you agree with that?
Depends on what market, what price point.
Okay, for all the price, for all the markets out there, there doesn't seem to be enough. It's almost at equilibrium.
Okay.
You agree with that?
No.
You don't? Okay, so do you agree there's too much in the market or not enough?
I'm not sure what your line of questioning is, is trying to accomplish.
I'm just asking a question. It's not a line of question. I just need to know.
Mr. Kane?
My, my purpose in this is offering something that the market would like right now in a market that is currently not being served in new construction. That's what I'm looking to do. I would love to be able to provide that. I see the market showing that for us, and I'd like to be able to provide that. If that, if you don't like the look of it, if you don't like the size of it, I understand that. But, but, but I'm telling you, my intent is to sell more homes than less homes.
Sure.
That's my intent.
I understand that.
And we are good corporate citizens, and we make sure that the product looks good. And I, I hope you would agree that it does. And it's in keeping with what we have in the community. So that's kind of where I am. My intent is no more or less than that.
As council knows, taking the development through the circle of fire that we all have to do these days takes forever. We started on this project 27 months ago in design and everything else. We work a lot with NBR Ryan, Ryan Homes, as you folks know, is one of the top five in the country. And at the time, we sat there and went through with them what the product was, the product that was being built there now, everybody thought that would be fine. And then obviously, with the downturn, with COVID and everything else, and the fact that Ryan and some other markets had introduced this product without the garage, and the fact that it still looks the same, that the characteristics are everything good. And they said they've had good success with that, and that they can get a wider bandwidth of potential sales by doing that. So it's not hurting the people that are there. And it is allowing, particularly given all the ups and downs we've had with the economy, it's given some of those people who might not have been able to afford the 180 starting price, they now are able to afford the lesser price.
And, and that sales price would be, what do you hope to be?
160s.
160?
I think it's about $15,000 less for not having a garage.
Like, what is our break-even point on residential or service?
With our current budget and the way that we figure that number, it has went up from what we had in, in, in the past. Right now, that is at $270,000. In order for you to meet, our, the way we calculate, the way we determine that
Yeah.
is that we figure about half our budget goes to support residential development, the other half goes to support everything else. Based on our military, in order for you to meet that, what that, it's about $1,000, you have to have a value of $270,000 in the house to get that $1,000.
Okay, so one unit, 160, and 160 is 3?
20.
320, okay. And that, that's, that's selling at 160, correct?
In the 160s.
Okay, not below 160?
No.
As you can imagine, as y'all did the same thing with add-ons and everything else, it's simply, from a marketing standpoint, it provides them the opportunity to say, to stay in the city of Greer, a price point that is currently not being met, and therefore gives Ryan Homes an advantage. Some of their competition, unfortunately, is outside the city of Greer limits. And you don't want those people going there because it doesn't support and help the city of Greer. So all we're trying to do is be, as Bill said, good neighbors. We're just trying to provide an additional price point that we think will be well received because it already has been well received in other markets with similar type characteristics.
I, I've got two more questions. How, how far is the build out at this point? 50%?
We're over 50%, yes.
How many have you sold?
Total 40-something?
Yeah, we.
You sold almost 100%?
Yes.
Okay, so then that goes back to my question. How can you say that there's no demand for that product?
Jay, they've got a different business model than most.
I got you. I understand. But this is a DRD. It's a DRD, and this is what they were, they said that they were going to do. The city already gave them a lot of exemptions by, like, there's no sidewalk on the rear of the property. We, you know, I don't know why they were allowed that exemption if they were. And so I don't, I just, that, that's my opinion.
So let me, let me take a little different tact here. There's 94 available lots, is that correct?
That's correct.
And approximately, how many finished homes are there at this point in time?
Um, half.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's one reason why they were trying to sell planning and so forth by, excuse me, I hate to stand, but by, by requiring that the builder developer does not put two side-by-side townhome units together, clusters, whether it's three, four, or five-unit buildings. That's trying to spread the potential, how it may look or something like that. We agree to do that because, again, we're talking about 50 lots, okay? So it's not the end of the world. But at the same time, it provides our builder the opportunity to increase sales, increase volume, get the thing through, and provide more, more income for the city of Greer. I mean, it's a win-win. We're not, we're not asking for a dramatic change.
Well, it's not really a win-win when you consider the cost to serve it. I understand what you're saying. If you consider other money spent by the people living there, that makes a big difference. But
Sure.
Just the fact there's a house there, it's not a win-win.
Faster than, than slower. That's really our objective.
Right. But, but you're not having an issue with that at this point. Like, it's almost like you get them built and they're sold.
Faster is always better than slower for us.
They don't build, Ryan doesn't build spec homes. So when a buyer comes in off the street, you basically start the construction at that point once you come to terms.
Until we have a contract underway, we do not start construction.
So that's why he's, you know, he's saying that when they had an idea of, of the product they wanted to bring to the market in the beginning, and that's why he's saying market research, it's, it's actual, there's not enough people coming in and saying, I want the product that you have. We need you to make a shift in that.
And to be honest with you, it's that there are a number of competitors that have a very similar product to what I'm offering in Greer right now that I'm competing against, and that's making me slower than I'd like to be.
And just to follow up, if you look at the site plan, one of the requirements that Ryan has is, if you take any one of what we'll call those pads, and some of the pads you can see are three lots, four lots, five lots, until they get all of the pads, I'm sorry, until they get all the lots sold in that pad, they will not start construction.
Right.
So just because they sell two out of three on one of those pads doesn't mean they're going to start construction. They don't start construction until all three are sold. So again, we're trying to keep the rabbits in the basket here. We're trying to accelerate sales. We're trying to get through this thing. And we hope you all appreciate what we're trying to do.
And one more thing I want to touch on with the cost to serve discussion we're having. Just because y'all are starting in the 160s does not mean you finish there. That's just an entry point for the, the base model. And then there's, there's additions and add-ons.
And that sort of thing.
And it's very, it's very unlikely that somebody comes in and you say 160s, which is like 165 or 169 or whatever, that their contract price is going to be in the 160s. It's going to move north of that based on sound packages or windows.
Plugs, packages.
Right, or whatever. Right.
But that goes back against the argument affordable housing. I mean, you know, if you want to provide affordable housing, drop your price. Don't change the product, what you said you were going to do. That's, that's, anybody can do that. I, I just, I just don't see that, that the market has changed in our economy, which I'm talking, when I say our economy, I'm talking about city.
So it's a market demographic thing. It's not necessarily how good and robust the market is. So if I've got a limited number of buyers, uh, there's a certain number of buyers, and I've got other competitors that are building similar product outside of the city of Greer, in this general area, then there is more supply than there is, right? There's more supply than there are buyers? And so there are less buyers out there for me to sell this exact product to. So in order to expand that, I'd rather speed up the completion of the community than slow it down. I'm offering to a, a market that is lower, is smaller, less price than what's existingly available, and certainly not, nobody else has what I have. And to the, I can just lower my price. Nobody works for free. So there's
I got it, but you're making a big point about
I can't afford to lower the price and build it.
You're making a big point about affordable housing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we, do we want affordable housing?
Yes.
And, and, and so my point is, if you want to provide affordable housing, you know how to do that. Either don't build something that sells for whatever, or reduce your sales price.
Okay.
I've got an issue with the reducing, what I say, the value. When you go from 1,600 down to 1,300, you take away a garage, that's reducing the value.
Okay, but, but.
You're saying the price per square foot is actually more, though? Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
So it's like?
So how are you valuing? Are you looking at the total price? Or are you looking at the cost per square foot? So that's why it, it can vary. So that's why it doesn't negatively impact the neighbors out there.
So Bill, help me out here. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do this math here. And so we, let's, we've got 47 that are, that are complete, ready to go. Somebody's living in or going to be soon.
Yep.
That leaves 47. We're, we can't have more than two sets of townhomes without a garage next to each other. We've only got 47 lots left. There's going to be up to a maximum of 30 on here, but by my calculations, if we do these smaller units for every two other townhomes, we're
About 18.
Townhome buildings.
Townhome buildings.
Yes, it's about
We're, we're, we're less than 20.
Yeah, it's about 18. I mean, again, we realize why you decided to make it a major change. We tried to make it a minor change because by the time you get through this thing, we're not talking about that many units, A. B, the elevation, as you see, is consistent with what's already out there. The only difference is we have taken out a garage. And we still think that the development, when it's all said and done, will look very good. And you're not going to have that many of those buildings, pads, that will be allowed to do that anyway. Because if we got a, if we can't have two pads together, then by the time you disperse those, it looks like to us it'll probably be about 18 when it's all said and done.
I mean, bottom line is, I've got a community in another area that I did this very, very same thing to in January. And I have 10 homeowners now that are living in homes that they could not afford what I currently offer. But because I had a new product on the ground, they're now homeowners.
What community?
I'm sorry?
Where was that?
Westone in Spartanburg.
Okay, so, so basically, we're talking about 20%, which is mixed in throughout 100 homes. At the whole development.
That's correct. And the only reason, just for y'all's information, the only correct, the only reason that you see those shaded 47, you see those 14 that are shaded, those are currently not in plan. We would anticipate, once the sell-through goes through, that we would add those additional 14 to the mix. And then you'd have a total of 113 or 114. But we're not talking about those tonight. That's why you see they're, they're cut out. That hasn't been approved.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right. All right. New discussion or new questions in regards to ordinance 40-dash 2020?
I have a question. It's not related. It's the easy one for you. On Mitchell, where you had to make a street cut to obtain sewer, does all of Mitchell get repaid, or is it, are you finished with that?
Uh, CPW still has additional work to do, if I'm not mistaken. That was negotiated probably a year and a half ago. So I get to tear off top of my head.
What, what happens to the street? Is that who, who, are y'all, were y'all required to?
We were.
Okay, and is that?
And we did. We did. We did what was required of us as part of the initial construction. Because if you remember, there were some homes on that other side that had complained that when they had large rains and so forth, there was a lot of runoff. Well, runoff was there before we even started construction. So one of the things that happened is they created some culverts and whatever else the, uh, was required of us. And that has taken care of it as far as we've been told.
No, I'm talking about, I, I might be wrong. We, you did a street cut on Mitchell that runs from about the middle of Mitchell out to Main, where it ties into, I guess, the Trump line? Is it, am I, am I calling it the wrong road?
I, I think you are. I'm not sure if that's where you're going.
Runs from James to Main. Runs from James to Main.
We've got one way in, one way out. That's on the 14.
Yes, but when the development happened on Mitchell, which is the side road, correct? Is that right?
To the top of the plat right there, there's a road cut right in the middle of the road from about halfway back out to Main Street, where you went under Main Street over there to tie into the big Force Main.
I can't tell if that shows it or not.
Mitchell Drive?
Yes.
Is that showing there right there, or... I'm not sure if it does. I just wasn't sure if these would help at all.
You couldn't see where it's done. It's a cut where I think sewer went in.
It's a trench cut that goes all the way because I believe sewer comes out the side, correct? And then it runs out to Main, where the big Main...okay. So, my question...right, so, on Mitchell, what happens to that pavement? Is it done with it?
Well, I mean, as far as I know today, your stormwater and building inspection are real good by keeping it in the stormwater.
No, I'm talking about the pavement of the road, not the stormwater or runoff or anything. It's just the patch with the trench for the sewer. You know, it's...you know, they had a road out there that had been recently paved in the last couple of years, and now it's not. That's just...I think I was told that it was in the development agreement and the county enforcing that. Is it not?
Anyway, yeah. Since it's not germane to this conversation, we can let council...we'll let staff handle it. We've got motion and a second on the floor for ordinance 40-2020. Any new information or relevant discussion that we haven't already touched on at this Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ms. Cotty, I believe we've got to the end of your list, it appears. Thank you for your assistance.
Of course, thank you. Do you want me to...
Counsel, the next item before us is the first and final resolution, number 21-2020. This comes with some explanation. To rename the City of Greer Center for the Arts Building, the Edward R. Drigger City of Greer Center for the Arts Building. As you are all aware, that cat's out of the bag, or cow's out of the barn, as they say. I had approached y'all about renaming the center, obviously, prior to us engaging in that process. And both Ms. Duncan and I both had extended conversations with our attorney about whether or not a resolution prior to doing this was necessary. It was his opinion that we were fully authorized to do this, but that to keep it under wraps, so to speak, we could wait and actually formalize this in a resolution at this point in time. After talking with Mr. Driggers, he also agreed that, as a matter of record, that it might be in our best interest and his best interest, so that nobody 20 years down the road said, "Well, he named a building after himself before he left." So, we do have a resolution that is contained in your packet this evening. I will entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion in that regard? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes. And our final item this evening is to ask Mr. Reno Deaton to come forward. This is a resolution certifying certain real property inside the City of Greer as a tax mill site. This comes as resolution number 22-2020. Mr. Deaton, thank you for joining us, sir.
Yes, sir. May I, counsel? Good evening. Reno Deaton with the Greer Development Corporation. The request before you this evening is to designate the Greer Mill property as a abandoned textile mill site. The material in your packet includes the proposed resolution, reviewed and approved as deformed by Michael Kuzlark, the City of Greer's Attorney for Economic Development Matters. And the attachments include the required affidavit that you asked for in these cases, as well as the notice of intent to rehabilitate that's filed with the state, I believe with some additional materials. This is actually the footprint...this parcel is the footprint of the Greer Mill building. Lawrence Black, the developer of the project, is here this evening if you have any questions about his intent or the project, or has this request come before you this evening?
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a mo...for the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
Ray, have we ever done a resolution like this for certifying that it's a textile mill site? I've always thought that we were always talking about abandoned buildings. I mean, it's fine. I was just wondering if there's a question.
And I apologize, I don't know the intricacies of one versus the other. I think I seem to recall the last one we did, which was property adjacent to the physical building. I believe that was under the provision for textile mills and not just abandoned buildings. To prevent any issues on our end, we obviously asked Michael Kuzlark, as your attorney, to review all of that, to make sure that it provides you the most protection possible in terms of any follow-up that might be required.
Mr. Black, anything you would like to add this evening?
Um, no, I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for joining us and bringing up the rear end of the train this evening, so...any more discussion or comments in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? It has been a long time since we didn't have anything in executive session, but we do not have anything in executive session this evening. You stand adjourned.